Okay, it is nine o'clock. This is Thursday, January 23rd, 2025, and I call this meeting of the Governing Board to order. If you are able, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Okay, thank you. We have all nine members of the Governing Board present, so we do have a quorum. And I have to read the meeting procedures. The Governing Board conducts all of its meetings in compliance with Arizona Open Meeting Laws per ARS Statute 33-1804 and in concert with RCSCW Bylaws, Policies, and Standing Rules. Parliamentary procedures, as outlined in the most recent edition of Robert's Rules of Order, will also be followed in board meetings as appropriate, consistent with Bylaw 3.07, entitled Procedures for Owner-Member Meetings, and Standing Rules Number Two and Number Three. All questions and comments are to be directed to the Governing Board President. All comments are entertained at the discretion of the Governing Board President. Speakers shall state their name and member number and speak in a courteous manner. The Governing Board President may limit commentary time and number of commentators or speakers on any issue. The Governing Board President may also redirect commentary at individual Agenda items to the General Guest Comments Agenda line item, except when the Board has discussed the Agenda item and a formal vote is to be taken. All fire and room safety precautions and regulations are strictly obeyed at all meetings per the guidance of the Arizona Fire and Medical Authority. The Governing Board reserves the right to adjourn any meeting if the safety of the Board, meeting attendees, or others is deemed at risk, or if there is too much disruption to continue. After one verbal warning by the President, the Board also reserves the right to ask any meeting attendees to leave any meeting should their behavior be deemed dangerous or unacceptable. Disciplinary action may follow. Okay, with that out of the way, first thing we'll discuss is the meeting minutes from our December 19th, 2024 regular meeting. Are there any changes, additions, or notations to those meeting minutes? I see none, so they will be accepted as written. Going down to new business, item 3.01, December 2024 Year-to-Date Financial Review, our CFO, Cliff Swan.
Morning, President Leary, Governing Board, community. Gave a little bit of a high-level preview of this at our mid-year meeting, but just going to go through the December year-to-date results here, and let's get started. So kind of boilerplate stuff, we go through here, we talk about our operating statement, which is all of our operating expenses and our operating income, and we compare that to budget in prior year for the month and year-to-date. And then we move down to the capital section, which we talk about APFs and our reserve fund performance down there. And then we move into our capital improvement budget and talk about where we are year-to-date, and finally, our fully funded balance percent. Getting into the operating statement for the month of December, pretty much right on budget, $32,000 unfavorable on approximately $2.8 million in revenue. Golf struggled a little bit at $53,000 deficit. I will say, through December, we had approximately 125,000 rounds of golf, and we budgeted 320,000 rounds for the year. So you can tell, for the next six months, we'll have about 41% of our budget in golf rounds hit over the next six months. So it's a big, big time for us in the spring, so we make a lot of hay, and it really, you know, to look at the first six months is not indicative of a half-year performance. We really need to take a look at the next couple of months and see how we shake out in February, January, February, and March. But again, to give some context, we have $11 million in our golf budget, okay? So we had approximately $3.9 million in revenue through December, in terms of just golf revenue, not food and beverage or merchandise or anything like that, or golf rentals, cart rentals, or anything like that. But with that, you know, we've got approximately $4 million through December, we've got $7 million in our budget for the next six months. So we'll really see how we shake out as we move through the year, just wanted to give some context there. And I'll also say, we spend a lot of money in the first six months, so we prep our golf courses with the overseeding, all the investments and time and energy we put into those golf courses in the first six months, that's what returns that $7 million over the next six months. So understand that we do operate at a deficit in golf, but for the year, in terms of an amenity, those courses cost us about $100,000 per course after we wash out all the expenses with the revenue. If you compare that to a pool, we're doing pretty good in golf. Pools cost a lot of money, so more than $100,000. Okay, so looking at the expenses, $215,000 favorable. We did have some more open seats come up this year in December. Unfortunately, we had one of our golf assistant superintendents actually passed away, so we've got some open seats in golf that we're trying to fill, and that's creating a positive variance for us. Fortunately, we were able to get through the oversea period, staffed up pretty well, but right now, we're looking at filling some positions in golf, and then we've had some turnover in a maintenance department, special events, membership, finance. So we are getting healthy in all those areas, but we do have some open seats that we had in December and some of the prior months. But moving forward, we should be getting healthy there. Okay, so $183,000 overall for the month of December, favorable. You see that we actually have a cash inflow for the first month of the year. And if we compare that to last year, we're $50,000 favorable to prior year for the month of December. Now, let's look year-to-date. So $106,000 unfavorable year-to-date, you'll see $120,000 in golf. I will say, in, through December, we're approximately $4,000 rounds off of prior year, and through the first 22 days of January, we're approximately 1,300 rounds up in the month of January over prior year. So again, we'll look and monitor that as we move forward, but no need to panic. $120,000 on 3.8 million, 3.9 million in revenue is not a lot. On 320,000 rounds of golf budgeted, so that's pretty good. Okay, looking at the expenses, $851,000 favorable. Again, wages and benefits, we just presented our annual enrollment presentation for our health benefits, and when we put the budget together in June, we had 41 employees on our census for our health insurance, and we currently have 31. So that's also creating a positive variance in our wages and benefits, significant positive variance due to that. But so we'll watch that, but $851,000 positive. If you look at some of the other areas, if you look down in the repairs and maintenance section, I mean, we're pretty much right on budget. Supplies, in the supplies area, fuel has a $53,000 favorable variance to budget, and that's just simply because the rates, the fuel rates are down compared to prior year, which is what we budgeted off of when we looked at our fuel. We've got $8,000 in savings in our office supplies, we've got $6,000 savings in our cleaning supplies, and then if we move down to the operating expenses, which is in that legal professional ops and other, we've got $46,000 still earmarked for cameras that we have to do, so that will get spent, that $46,000. And then, you know, there's some other timing variances in some of the outside services and the service contracts, which are going to even up a little bit, but there is, there are savings in those areas. But $851,000 year-to-date favorable. Total $745,000, if we were looking at our operating cash inflow-outflow, so we're still operating at a deficit, we talked about it earlier, 1.7 million, but we're $745,000 ahead of budget at 2.5 million. If we look at our, compared to prior year, prior year, we were operating at approximately $2.1 million deficit versus a $1.7 million deficit, so $344,000 favorable compared to prior year, which is great news. $302,000 in operating expenses, most of that, that $302,000 is wages and benefits, which were, you know, insurance increases, wage increases. So those are budgeted for, so we're holding pretty tight to prior year on our expense structure, on our operating expenses, which is a testament to all the management team, and so we're doing good there. Looking forward to putting the budget together and taking some of these savings and impacting the budget for next year for that, so. All right, moving down to the capital section, APFs are a little bit off of budget, you know, but for the most part, right on budget. Looking at our performance in our reserve fund, we had a little tougher month in December at $684,000 in realized and unrealized gains and losses, $644 is unrealized, so kind of evaluation change there. We'll see what happens as we move forward, where January is looking much better. I think we're positive by 100 through first two-thirds of the month, so we'll keep an eye on that. Again, these are all kind of long-range planning things, we really don't need access to that reserve fund on a year-to-year basis. We have, we pull in enough income between APFs and operating income to cover all of our capital spend. In fact, we don't even true it up for 14 months or 16 months into the, into the year, so we're in good shape, we'll keep an eye on that, of course, but $712,000 unfavorable to budget, we don't budget realized gains and losses, so, and unrealized gains and losses. Compared to prior year, we had a good month in December of the prior year in our reserve fund in terms of valuation, so obviously, we'd be tracking behind that, approximately 1.4 million behind prior year in the reserve fund valuation change, and that makes up the deficit we're right on with prior year. Had a little stronger prior year in December in terms of APF fees. Year-to-date, APF fees, right on, right on budget in APF fees, and you'll see, we put approximately, well, it's $565,000 we've earmarked to go into our reserve fund from operations. So if you took that 565 and offset that half a million dollar, I'm sorry, that 1.7 million dollar deficit for the year, we're actually 1.2 million deficit for the year. But 565 going in the reserve fund year-to-date, pretty dang good. Looking at the reserve fund, in terms of valuation change, we're about even, plus 10 for the year, but if you look at the investment income, you'll see we've generated $614,000 in investment income net of fees. If you annualize that, it's about a 4% rate of return, which is in a 90-10 bond mix, pretty good. So $169,000 favorable compared to budget. Compared to prior year, 632, biggest swing in the, in the realized gains and losses, unrealized gains and losses, excuse me, but $160,000 ahead on APF fees. If you take a look at that, that's basically, we had $515 through the year of last year at $5,000, if you add that extra 200 plus the additional 10, that gets you to approximately $160,000. So that all jives and makes sense, and then the valuation performance will continue to track that in the reserve fund. Overall, $914,000 ahead of budget, and approximately $288 with that big swing in the valuation in the reserve fund, unrealized valuation change of $288,000 total compared to prior year overall. Moving into the capital improvement budget, we budgeted approximately $9.9 million. If you'll remember, we've got a big irrigation project at Echo Mesa that's in that, which is basically doubles our capital improvement budget compared to what it would have been without a big irrigation project. And that's going to happen over the next 10 years. We have one slotted, Stardust is next, I believe Pebblebrook is next, so Stardust in two years, Pebblebrook in two more years, down the line until we finish them all through 2035. But over the next 10 years, we have irrigation projects, and this happens to be one of those years. We're going to do the capital improvement budget later for 2026, you'll see that the capital improvement budget being requested is half of that, so. So right now, we're tracking at $172,000 favorable when you compare the capital improvement list to POs that have been issued or projects that have been completed, so we're looking forward to a positive variance of $172,000, and we'll continue to report and track on that throughout the year. All right, we have in our allowances capital improvement budget, $420,000 through half of the year, we've used $139,000 of that, and we have approximately $281,000 available for unexpected items that happen throughout the year. Keep in mind, most of these items, almost all of them are reserve items, they're just, just so happens that that item didn't get, we didn't get the useful life that we thought we would out of that item. So when that happens, we have this opportunity to take care of it in the current year, and if you look through this, most of this are either existent items that for one reason or another weren't on the capital improvement budget, maybe they didn't hit the $5,000 threshold previously, so they weren't on the 1,400 item list that we have, or they're items that got moved up. So how are we doing? So our fully funded balance percentage is really the indicator that tells us how healthy our reserve fund is, because it's all about the reserve fund. So we put it in this budget, 51, I'm sorry, we started this budget out at the end of last year, at 51%, we budgeted with that big irrigation project to be at 47%, and it's hard to give a real-time snapshot of your fully funded balance percentage, because your fully funded balance, it changes daily, sometimes multiple times a day, every time we go into that reserve study to adjust something, revalue something, relife something, it changes. So I will say, though, with all the green that you see up there, those are all positive impacts in our cash inflows into our reserve fund, and so as you can see, we're well on pace to hit that 47%, and we'll continue to monitor throughout the year, but we're in good shape, very good shape through the first six months of the year. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Cliff.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions from the members of the Board, any discussion? Yes, go ahead, Director Novello.
Thank you very much, President Leary, and thanks again. The Budget and Finance Committee had the opportunity to dive even more deeply into this same presentation, but we felt that, again, this was, this all looked like it was on pace to our expectations. Just wanted to emphasize one of the points that our CFO made about realized and unrealized gains and losses. So some of the numbers look a little daunting, but that's sometimes what happens, especially around the time that there's some changes, inflationary changes, we've just recently had an administration change at the federal level. So some of these things will cause some shifts in market, in fund valuations, but we're on pace to make up some of that. At least that was the assessment of our professionals as well as the committee. So while the number looks a little daunting for the month of December perhaps, remember it's unrealized at this point, which means we don't have to touch that, and there's time for that to come back, as I understand, just a comment, is that correct?
That's correct, yes, and also to factor in that investment income, because that's all part of the equation. So with that $600,000 and being at, the valuation for the fiscal year currently is even, so even when you look at the unrealized gains and losses. So we're tracking at 4% rate of return, which is what this, this was set out to do.
Thank you. John?
Thank you, Cliff. Did you say that we were 90% invested in bonds?
Fixed income, yes, but yes, bonds mostly.
Okay, so we're down, but if all those interest rates are down, which gives us the unrealized loss, but if all those bonds would be held to maturity, there would be no loss?
Yes, well, so, yes, we're in ETFs, so they are traded daily, but yes, it's correct, that's correct. If we stick to the strategy, we'll continue, we'll get that 4% rate of return, which is what the strategy is. Now, there's some discussion on whether that's enough right now. Should we be looking at 4%, or we should be, should we be looking at 7%, you know, in terms of planning? So that's what the working group, and we'll get an update on that later, but yes, absolutely, and, and again, you can't discount the investment income, so we're not actually negative, we're actually plus $600,000.
So we're considering some more riskier investments, is that the?
Yes, I guess, yes. Risk, risk in terms of the security, not risk in terms of, I don't want to spoil what you're going to talk about later, so, so we'll talk about it, but, but yeah, it's when we look at our objectives and our, and the policy, liquidity is one of those objectives, and if we look at the cash inflows that we have, we have enough cash inflows in terms of APFs and operating income to satisfy our cash needs. So how important is liquidity in terms of the whole $31 million? Do we really need that to be super liquid or not?
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Director Rhodes?
Yeah, Cliff, what's the benchmark for the, both the equity and the fixed income?
Approximately 4%.
So we're meeting or exceeding that?
Yes, correct.
Hey, anything else from the Board? Questions from the audience? Comments?
Dennis Hansel, 111074, to clarify what was previously incorrectly stated, we are, the association is investing in bond funds, ETFs, and that is a security, so there's an inherent risk in our bond funds going down if interest rates go up, which was the problem we've incurred. A U.S. Treasury will yield over 4% without any risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Any comments, questions online?
Nothing online.
Okay, thank you, Cliff. We will move on to Agenda Item Number 3.02. Director Novello?
Thanks, President Leary. The Budget and Finance Committee had the pleasure of receiving the detailed presentation that's included in our packet today from Marsha McLennan, you may remember them more as Love It and Touche, but Scott Ragland, they're part of Marsha McLennan now. Scott Ragland, the EVP that is in charge of our business, came in and gave us a detailed presentation. So for any of the Directors or residents who may want more of the details behind this, please go back to the recording of our Budget and Finance Committee meeting, and you can get all of the details of how these numbers were arrived at. But the bottom line here, just so that we're aware, we were able to review the upcoming renewal for our employee health benefits that will be offered for the next year or the upcoming year post-renewal. So after analysis, the current provider for the Recreation Centers of Sun City West employees is Aetna, and Aetna came back in with a variety of different proposals. I think we're all aware of the fact that costs are out of control across the board, but especially in the areas of healthcare and pharmaceuticals. The industry there and the costs have just exploded, and I believe many of us are feeling that personally, or we're certainly reading about it. So in that atmosphere, Aetna came back with a proposal for their renewal with an increase that was substantially more than what you will actually see in the proposed renewal. Thanks to the efforts of Marsha McLennan, they were able to negotiate the renewal downward from the initial proposal downward to the current view, which is 5.81% of an increase. While none of us wants to see any of these costs increase, this actually is a substantial reduction. I believe that the, that the initial proposal came in at 15%, negotiated it down further to 8%, and then landed here at 5.81% by making some adjustments that were amenable to our HR director and work in our favor. So for the Directors and anybody who's looking online, the best page to look for in terms of an overall summary is Page 12. That actually gives you a little bit more of a summary in terms of the numbers, but... But after reviewing all of the, the numbers and hearing the details and, and receiving a lot of great explanations from Marsha McLennan, the, the Budget and Finance Committee is very comfortable with this renewal. Not that it's something that we necessarily need to approve, but after reviewing it in detail, we had nothing but positive commentary and feedback for our HR department as well as for Marsha McLennan. So that's the overview. Again, the increase is 5.81%. And while we, no one loves to see things go up, it could have been so much worse, and we were really impressed with the way that Marsha McLennan really led our business through, our business being in the update, the way that they led that negotiation to minimize the exposure for us.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Yes, Director Rhodes?
I have a question for Director Novello. I, I would say kudos to the, those who negotiated, but they, they actually dropped it about 65, 66% from 15 to $5.
Yes.
What did we have to give up? I mean, anytime they tell you it's not about the money, it is about the money.
Yes.
You know, so what are the benefits or whatever it is that we had to compromise on in order to, to go from $15 to $5 because, or $6? Because that's huge.
Yeah, 15, you're exactly right. It's spelled out on page 12, actually, Director Rhodes. Great question. They reduced this renewal further by taking back two of the potential benefits around a wellness package and a communications fund. That would be, so these are things that were, have been nice things to add for our employees, but they're not things that were deemed essential to the business. So that was how they were able to get that final 1.2% down. So, so they came back to us and it reduced further to the 5.81%. And I believe our HR department was, and our employees are very comfortable with, with that give back.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the audience? And questions and comments online?
Nothing online.
Okay. Thank you for that, Director Novello. Let's move to agenda item 3.03, which is the procurement policy. Carl, I don't think we're ready, we got one more item before you.
Sorry.
That's why you're excited, I know, I get it.
We are too.
Okay, Director Novello, FI 10.
Thanks, President Leary. So we, as a part of all of our business, all of our committees review all of our policies every year. Budget and Finance has three more policies that we're reviewing. FI 10 relates to procurement and specifically around how much, well, there's a lot more into the policy, but at question is how much money could, or how much value could an employee of the Recreation Centers of Sun City West, how much value could they receive in the form of a gift or a thank you from a vendor or a potential vendor? Very important policy. There's a lot more to it, but that's at, at question. So the committee looked at that and looked at the number, but more importantly, the policy FI 10, I can't say more importantly, in addition, policy FI 10 is, seems to be written or directed at more of the employees. Nonetheless, there are a few words of verbiage in there that also include members of the governing board, or some of the verbiage in there blends it in. And as we all know, governing board directors are not employees, we are volunteers. So because of that, it gets a little confusing. There's an additional, a separate policy for conflict of interest that pertains to the governing board, that's LO 2. So we decided as a committee to take this back for further review, to see if there's a better way to clarify that verbiage, and also to ensure that we are correctly reflecting the intentions of the community in terms of understanding how much value we want to include. So there's still some question about whether or not the committee will recommend a change in that value. Again, there's, there was a lot of discussion about raising that, that dollar value in the committee, while it seemed very comfortable with that. Is reconsidering that and the verbiage, we'll make a recommendation if there will be any changes. We'll be considering that and discussing it again at our December, December, February 4th meeting, which is our next meeting. So nothing to, that's just a quick update. Nothing, no decisions or recommendations are made at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments from the board? Okay.
I neglected to, I'm sorry, President Leary, I neglected to also include as a part of the discussion was whether or not the LO 2 or any policy about these tips and gifts and so forth would also extend to our committees as a whole and not just the directors themselves. So those are questions that the committee are, will be considering around FI 10, just as an FYI, apologies.
None necessary. Yes, Director, Director Hurley, sorry.
Yes, I'd like to direct this to, excuse me, Director Novello. Have you checked to see if there's any federal or state statutes that might have implication to this?
We've not. So we can check into that at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
And we're saying implications, Director Hurley, it's limits or whether or not we can blend?
Right.
Good, good call out, we'll, we'll check into that, thank you.
Thanks.
Good call. Yeah, Director Rhodes?
Actually, I just want to echo that because the feds are very prescriptive about this, and they're, they're very firm and adamant about any type of violation here, and we should probably walk and step with that.
Okay, good. Anything else from the board? Anything from the audience? Online? No, nothing online. Okay, thank you for that, Director Novello. We're going to move on now, Carl. Carl is going to give us an update on the FY 2025-26 Sip and R, our overview.
Terry, if we could go to page three of the presentation. It's my pleasure to announce that it's been a very successful month of giving this capital project or proposed capital budget to all committees, our governing board during the workshop a few weeks ago. And I'm happy to announce that there is no changes to our current budget that the general manager is proposing to you. We still have new capital at $190,000. Repair and replacement for the Recreation Divisions of our association at $2,685,12. Repair and replacement for Golf and Landscaping, $2,714,776. And the allowances at $520,000 as proposed in all of the committee meetings and the governing board workshop for a total budget of $5,493,288. We'll be moving on into February and repeating this process again at all the committees for any changes. There are no current changes to date that I'm aware of, and items over $100,000 per our policies on giving project planning process and working towards the end of February slash March timelines for recommendations from the governing board. I do have this presentation if there's any questions. Otherwise, that concludes my comments.
Okay, any questions for Carl from the board? Okay, audience? I stunned them into silence. Okay, any online questions?
Nothing online.
Nothing online. Okay, thank you, Carl. That's great. Okay, we'll go to agenda item 3.04. This is revised standing rule number three. You'll recall that we looked at this in our regular meeting and, I'm sorry, our workshop meeting, and we looked at the changes for, if you can scroll down, Terry, to the, the big changes were on page two, where we changed how the operating comments for the meeting are to be split up. So we'll reduce the, what is read at each of these meetings with the understanding that this rule, standing rule number three is in effect at all of our meetings. So with that, I will make my motion. I move that the governing board approve engross language revisions to standing rule number three entitled Rules for Association Governing Board Meetings as Redlined. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, second from Director Williams. Okay, I'll open it for discussion for the board. Any discussion? Okay. See, no discussion, anything from the audience? And anything from online?
Nothing online.
Nothing online. Okay, then with that, I'll read the motion again and go to a vote. I move that the governing board approve engross language revisions to standing rule number three entitled Rules for Association Governing Board Meetings as Redlined. And with that, I'll go for, for votes. I'll start with Director Horvath. Yes, let me just clarify, yes, you're agreeing with the changes and no, you are not. Director Graham?
Yes.
Director Novello?
Yes.
Director Chatten?
Yes.
Director Pajaskowski?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Director Rhodes?
Yes.
And Director Hurley?
Yes.
Okay. Unanimous vote that that is passed, so that will go into effect. And I had the honor of reading the last time the whole thing. So that will, yeah, so that will go into effect at the next, probably committee meeting, which happens, or at the first meeting that happens, whatever. Okay, thank you. We'll go to agenda item number 3.06. Director Pajaskowski, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, the motion is to the multi-day guest pass approval, and so what we're looking for is I move that the governing board approves RCSCW cardholder multi-day guest pass. Multi-day, correct?
Can you get a, can you get a second?
Correct.
Okay, second from Director Rhodes. Okay, now we'll open it to discussion, comments, questions for Director Pajaskowski. Did you have a, Director Rhodes?
It's, it's really not a question, it's really more editorial that, I, I really think this is a very positive step. I like the idea, and not to tip off what I would vote for, but I like the idea of a day plus two, you know, so.
Okay, yeah, that's.
I, I think this is very, I think people have been asking for this, and I think this is, this is a response to that, and I'm really pleased with it.
Yeah. Okay, good. Any other questions? Yes, Director, Director Novello?
Do, I'm not sure if it's only up to Director Pajaskowski, but do we need to specify the duration or our request for that?
No, this, this motion is to vote on the concept
Gotcha.
of a multi-day pass. The next, the next agenda item is the discussion of the duration. Yes, Director, Director Novello?
So thank you, that's all I wanted to say. So the next is on the policy itself, so thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Audience? Okay, online?
Nothing.
Nothing online, okay. Then Director Pajaskowski, please reread your motion.
I move that the governing board approved, approved the RCSCW cardholder multi-day guest pass.
Okay, and with that, I will start down at this end with Director Horvath. Yes, you're voting for the concept, no, you are voting against the concept?
Definitely yes.
Okay, Director Graham?
Yes.
Director Novello?
Yes.
Director Chatten?
Yes.
Director Pajaskowski?
Yes, I'm doing the happy dance.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Director Rhodes?
Yes.
And Director Hurley?
Yes.
Okay, it is unanimous, the concept has passed, so thank you. Okay, the next one is to discuss the revisions to policy M03, which will help us have the, will have the discussion as to which of the two options that we will present. If we have any questions, we have Sabrina standing by. So with that, I will turn it over to Director Williams, if you could read your motion. I'm sorry, let's, let's have a discussion first on this before we read the motion. So the, the two choices are a day plus one or day plus two for a total of either two days or three days respectively. Director Rhodes has started us off, he's in favor of the three day. Are there any other questions? Day plus two, yes, day plus two, that's the terminology. Any questions or comments? Yes, Director Novello?
I, I concur. I, I love the, I love the concept, I love all the, the hard work that our team put into it. It's, as Director Pajaskowski inferred, it's been a while, a long time coming, and, and I'm glad that we were, with the, with the help and input from our operations team able to find an opportunity that's going to move us forward. So I'm totally in favor of the maximum, which is the day plus two.
Anybody else? Director Horvath?
Yes, after this Christmas and my guests, I'm definitely in favor of the day plus two.
Anybody else? I do have a question for the board, actually. In this, in the original policy, it was not touched when it was redlined. There is a statement under section four, sentence number 4.1.1. It says, resident cardholder guests, all guests of resident cardholders must be personally signed into Recreation Center facilities at the initial purchase date of a single day. And I just, you know, I'll stop there. My question is, at one point, there was a intent that the guest had to be present during that purchase.
The first day.
That's right.
The first, the first day, yes, the first day. Does this statement clarify that, or is it necessary?
I think it's.
Or is it, you know, I'm, I'm just asking the question.
My, my input is that it, that's an operational procedure, and I'm confident that in the intentions of our operations team to continue to require that.
Okay. Anybody else? Yeah, okay, Director Rhodes?
I actually have a question, it's, it's kind of a broader scope, because if you look at this, this has a far-reaching effect. Because what we're thinking about right now, and what everybody in this room's thinking about is, oh boy, as Dennis said, I can do this and my kids can go. Well, what we're saying here is that all guests have to have the wristband, and especially those that we want to buy 200 days in advance. But what about the one day? And I think about our pickleball, I think about tennis, I think about all of the guests that we bring in here, which if we pass this, what we've said is all guests of, of cardholders will have a wristband. I would just want to make that very clear, because that's what I'm voting on. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Director Graham?
I kind of have one question. Section four, point one, point one, point one, point one. The daily guest fees do not apply to those six and under, so they won't be getting a wristband.
Under six.
They will get a wristband.
Four, three.
Okay, is that going to be?
They don't?
No, not a little.
Hold on. Okay, hold on, so the, Director, General Manager?
Yeah, thank you, President. So just to clarify, that, those that are, that fall into that category will not get a wristband, those with young children. As currently, they don't have, we don't have any system for that as well, as far as the receipts and such. And to clarify the last question, the, even the single day individuals will get a wristband. So if you come in and you want to get them one day, they will get a wristband for that day. But again, the, those that are five and under, under six, depending however you want to word it, do not get wristbands regardless.
Yes, Director Graham?
So my next question becomes, let's say a parent has a three-day wristband, and they come with kids. let's say a parent has a three-day wristband, and they come with kids under six. Does that waive the requirement that the six-year and under has to be with a member in order to be a guest? So a guest essentially can bring a guest that's under six?
I believe so, and I believe that's how we have it now, right? I mean, basically, those that are five and under can be, are able to come in, and yes, they could come with a guest.
But they would have to come.
Yeah. They'd have to come with a guest or come with a member.
Yeah, currently, those that are underage, so sixteen and under, have to be present with a, an adult, not can be a member or a guest, they just have to be accompanied by an adult.
So if you see any five-year-olds running around, you know, unattended? So any, Director Graham, does that answer your questions? Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, so with that, Director Williams, I'm going to ask you to read the second motion.
I move that the governing board approve in gross language revision to policy MO3 multi-day guest pass to allow RCSW cardholder additional two-day guest pass.
As redlined. Okay, thank you, and can I get a second on that motion? Second, Director Novello. Okay, now I have discussion on this specific motion, and I would refer you to the appropriate document in your packet. And you should note that in 4.1.1, .1, I don't know if I got enough .1s in there. The policy allows for the purchase of either a day plus one or a day plus two. So we're not lacking the element of just buying a day plus two. Any discussion? Okay, any discussion from the audience? Oh, Director Hurley?
Yeah, excuse me, I appreciate we're voting on the, the what, okay? But I, for one, would like to see the how, how they're going to actually implement this. Would it be possible to get a written policy or procedure? And how this is going to happen, because my question is, what about pickleball, what about tennis? How do we manage that?
Yeah, so President Larry, Director Hurley, so the, the way we've handled it before will be the same, we will continue, will continue to handle it, the only difference will be, instead of having that printed receipt, which is your golden ticket essentially, now your wristband is your golden ticket.
I, I understand that, but is that policy written, procedure written somewhere?
Sabrina, do, would you mind, I'm not sure if we have that somewhere, I was, I think that's going to be an operational policy for our staff, yes.
We did make a change to 4.1.1.1.2, that a receipt with a wristband, and we did change that language, a receipt with a wristband is issued for that guest pass, so I'm not sure if that's, answers your question exactly, but the way we do plan to implement this is the same way we were using our receipts, we just now get a wristband.
So the answer is, there's no written procedure? It's just, that's how you do things?
Well, staff would follow this policy as their, as their procedural, as their procedure, correct?
Okay. And the, the other thing I want to note is that this policy does not cover club guests. Those, those have a, they're covered by the RRMPs. Director Horvath?
Yes, along with what Director Hurley said is, what I see is, is this is kind of an, an open directive to operations to put this into effect and make sure that they can also tweak it to where it works properly. And we would have some sort of oversight if we saw or had complaints that it was no, that it wasn't working quite right, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so.
Director, Director Novello?
Also building on these ideas, would it be possible to ask our operations team to come back? We've seen that, or we've heard that there are some risks or potential risks as well behind this, so could we ask for an update in a few months after implementation, see how are things going? And, and at that point, hear a bit more about the procedure, how, how, and be prepared to answer a couple of questions around how, are there differences in how it's being implemented, the procedure that is, at various facilities, mini-golf and so forth, so, is that possible? Just a, a request would be
Happy to do that.
So a three-month update would be great.
Okay. Any, any other questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from the audience? Online? Nothing online? Okay, with that, Director Williams, could you please read your, reread your motion?
Motion. Yes, I move that the governing board approve in gross language revisions to policy MO3 multi-day guest pass to allow RCSW cardholders as redlined.
Please read the
Did I misunderstand what you said before, that you didn't want me to read the additional two-day, or you
No, please read that, please read, please read it as written.
I thought you wanted me to remove that. I move that the governing board approve in gross language revision to policy MO3 multi-day guest pass to allow RCSW cardholders additional two-day guest pass as redlined.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I will get, start with voting, I will start with Director Hurley.
Yes.
Director Rhodes?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Director Pajaskowski?
Yes.
Director Chatten?
Yes.
Director Novello?
Yes.
Director Graham?
Yes.
And Director Horvath?
Yes.
Okay, it passed unanimously. So that'll be, that's great, so thank you for that. Okay, 3.08, the PORA financial support approval. As a reminder to everybody, this was discussed at our workshop on December 13th, we had a presentation from Ralph Johnson, President and Treasurer of PORA, and there was active discussion. So this is a vote on, or a motion on what to do with the request that PORA has made, and I will turn it over to Director Horvath to read the motion.
Okay, the motion requested was, I move that the governing board approve conducting a referendum vote of the RS, S, CW members in the March 2025 election to implement a mandatory $15 per year per RCSW member fee to fund PORA's general operating fund and long-term maintenance of the PORA buildings and property.
Thank you, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Chatten. Okay. I will now open this to discussion of the members of the board. Who would like to start, Director Rhodes?
So I don't quite understand what's happening here, because it's my understanding that in, under legal review, we have been expressly prohibited from, in, in entering any type of a fiduciary agent for PORA, that there's case law that in situations such as this, that you cannot retroactively or require homeowners to join this, and that even if there was a referendum, that it was going to have to be 100%. So 27,000 people, I'm guessing there might be people even in this room that would object to paying that $15, and so, you know, are we chasing windmills here, or are we going through a prefunctory process, due process and deliberation to either make disposition on this?
So what we are doing here, and all, all the statements you made are, are accurate, they were discussed and presented at the December 13th workshop. The, the process we're going through here, there were, as you'll recall, there were four options that were laid out. One option, option number one was to do nothing, which would be unsatisfactory, because it would leave PORA hanging, and it would leave this body and this association hanging without a resolution. So the, the other two options were discussed, the fourth option that the President made was to deny this, and we agreed to move it to this meeting to make a decision so that we do have a final action on this. So the, so, and the other part of this is that Robert's rules of order dictate that motions be written in the positive voice. So we can, you can vote yes or no to this motion. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Any other discussions?
Yeah, I was just going to add, you know, I felt personally that we owe PORA a direct answer, that's also taped and everything else, out of due respect for the work that they do.
Exactly. Any other questions, comments by the board? Okay, any questions, comments from the audience? Please give us your name and your record number.
Ralph, Ralph Johnson, 120223. Reading the newspapers, both articles, a key part of PORA was not mentioned in either article.
Excuse me, Mr. Johnson, can you identify your role, please?
I'm, I'm sorry, Ralph Johnson, President of PORA, thank you. As I stated, neither article in the Independent indicated a key component of PORA, and I realize there was a lot of material presented trying to cover 45 years of history, and I taped it 11 minutes. But what I want to talk about this morning is related to the government relations as being our flagship division. Through the, through the years, and the first item that was accomplished was the Dysherds School Tax Recession from the taxing. Over the 45 years, the residents have saved substantial funds. I've, I've prepared a spreadsheet for the 2025 tax year. I received the school assessment from the Assistant Superintendent of Schools at Dysherds, the, the multiplier per $100 assessment is $5.51, and I've done research through the, through the year on sold properties, and have prepared this worksheet, spreadsheet, they're on the desk out front for you. And I, I read about five of them at the meeting, I'm going to, I'm going to give the average from low to high, the lowest $716 savings per $13,000 assessment, and the high is $2,478 on a $51,000 assessment. Let's go to the middle and concentrate on $1,500 as being average from low to high. Those documents are on the back of the, are on the table out front, that's available to you. In addition, our government relations
Excuse me, Mr. Johnson, I'm going to, I'm going to allow him to continue.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition, our committee spent massive amount, have spent and continue to spend massive amount of time at the Corporate Commission related to the utilities, and I've consulted with our past president and our past, pardon me, our past Chair of the Government Relations and our current Chair, and they've concluded that each, each resident is receiving $25 a month savings. Now, you say, yes, we have an increase, but bear in mind, those, those folks are down there working with RUCO to help offset the positions by that massive row of attorneys that represent the utilities. So that's the, the major work that has occurred through the decades, and so I heard the comment about who wants to spend the $15. Well, I think we've stated our case. In addition, we have the, the Water Committee that meets every month, very active, there's going to be some major documentaries presented over the next few months of their, their meetings that will give you further insight on the, not only Sun City West, Arizona, but the world conditions of waters, it's very, very informative. In addition, the Traffic and Safety, the folks meet every other month, and it's staffed by posse and Maricopa sheriffs, et cetera, et cetera, and very active, and also we conclude with the Transit Committee, it's a little bit inactive because we've had elections and, and reconstruction of some activities that are going on there, so those four items represent the key to PORA. Our building down there and what we do down there is very important, but this is the thrust of what we do, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other comments from the audience? Any comments online? Nothing online? Okay, Director Horvath, if, oh, do you have?
I was just going to say, I appreciated what, what President Johnson of course said, but for example, what do we do about what the lawyers said?
So, and that's, that's what we vote on?
Yeah, and so, so I, if you have an answer or a suggestion to that?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your question, sir.
I'm, it was a comment
It's a rhetorical question.
What do we, go ahead.
So what you're saying is that we have certain facts that we have to deal with?
Yeah, we have, the certain facts we have to deal with, where the lawyer has said, you know, he didn't recommend it, and also that we would probably need 100%, which what Director Rhodes said is not likely, very unlikely. So what do we do in the face of that? I mean, you don't go to a doctor and get his advice and then ignore it, because you're going to end up dead, so the same idea with a lawyer is, you know, we got his advice, what do we do about that?
I think it's a point of order that, was that a question, Director Horvath, for Mr. Johnson, because I think that's really a question for the board?
Yeah, I think it's, it's a rhetorical question, and we already, we, we, as Director Rhodes pointed out, we have the issues that, and the facts from our last meeting. Okay, thank you. It's okay. Okay, yes, Director Rhodes?
Yeah, actually, I just, I wanted to make a comment that there has never been a question, at least in my mind, on the value of what you've done. I think you've made some Herculean efforts to do that. As a homeowner, I'm grateful for it. It's just that we can't do anything. You know, there's a line that's drawn, it is a very, very clear line, and it leaves us no room for negotiation, unless we want to face litigation that we know absolutely will be coming, you know? That's, that's foolish on our part. So I, I don't see a difference here. The one, the one thing, kind of the, the elephant in the room here is, and, and I don't, I don't want to sound premature here, but we talked about this at the last, I mean, we still, we're writing, we're writing the obituary, and we still have the patient breathing, you know? Now, I don't want to sound flip about this, but there are residuals that if, if something should happen to your solvency, that has to be handled. I don't know what they are, it would be up to this group to make that decision, and I think there is interest in that. But I don't challenge your integrity, I don't challenge the work that you've done, I think it's been, I think it's been absolutely incredible. I don't, you haven't convinced the 27,000 residents in Sun City West that there's value, unfortunately. If I'm, the numbers I think are, you have 4,000 members or maybe less than that, that's 27,000, 4,000 out of 27,000. And, you know, they used to say in North Carolina, that dog don't hunt, you know, so. That's really all I have, and it's really more editorial, President.
So I would like, I would like to make a comment, one of Director Rhodes' comments, that we are voting today on the request that PORA has made of us. That's all we're voting on right now. Whatever happens with PORA's financial situation, that, that is their issue to address, it is not our issue to address. We are two entirely separate organizations. Now, if they come to us with another proposal, then we consider that at that time. But right now, we're just considering the request as stated in the motion. Mr. Metter?
Thank you, sir. Bud Metter, 132059. Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the Governing Board, fellow citizens, just an extemporaneous remark and observation that you need to consider, we need to consider, all of us need to consider, is that, and I just throw this out for your consideration. Whatever happens to PORA, worst case, let's say it ceases to exist, whenever we need it again, whenever we need this capability again, we'll simply have to rebuild it. If it dies now, at some point in time, whenever these issues that have come up over the last 46 years resurface, we'll have to rebuild it. And that's something that our community needs to keep in mind as we go forward on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, that is correct. And to reinforce what Director Rhodes said, there is no question in anybody's mind of the value that PORA has provided over the last 45, 46 year of their existence. So we're not voting on that, we are again, voting on the request that they have made. So if there's no more discussion, I will ask Director Horvath to reread the motion.
I move that the Governing Board approve conducting a referendum vote of RSCW members in the March 2025 election to implement a mandatory $15 per year per RCSW member fee to fund PORA's general operating fund and long-term maintenance of the PORA building and property.
Thank you. With that, I will start with Director Hurley. Yes, you vote, you agree and you're supporting the, the motion. No, you are not.
No.
Director Rhodes?
No.
Director Williams?
No.
Director Pajaskowski?
No.
Director Chatten?
No.
Director Novello?
No.
Director Graham?
No.
Director Horvath?
No.
Okay, unfortunately for PORA, that is your answer. You know, if there's, if you have a proposal you want to bring to us in the future, we would be open to hearing that. But with that, we will consider this request closed. Okay, then we'll go to Agenda Item 4.01, the December Financial Report Filing, Treasurer, Chairperson, Director Novello.
Thank you, President Leary. The December 2024 financials have been reviewed and accepted by the Budget and Finance Committee, and they have been filed.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Novello? Audience? Okay, nothing online. Okay, with that, we will go to the comments section, and I'll start with Director Horvath. Do you have any comments?
Yes, President Leary, I'm very sad at what we had to do, I'm very sad about PORA's situation. I too feel that it's a very important part of, of SCW. The only thing I can do is wish them the very best, and I am a member of PORA, will remain a member of PORA, and remain a proponent of PORA. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Graham?
No, sir, nothing to add.
Director Novello?
Real quick, two things. First of all, the, there was some mention of, during the course of our update from our CFO, our investment policies. If you can look at those financial policies, specifically, we're looking at the Reserve Fund Policy, FI4, and the Investment Policy, FI12. Those are two policies that are under review by Budget and Finance, and that's what we were discussing. So there is a working group that is looking at those policies and what they mean and what is in the best interest of Sun City West as an association, as a corporation. So for Director Chatten and for anybody else who has questions, you can go back to the overview, quick overview that was conducted at our last meeting, and all are invited to listen in and observe if you wish. Our next working group, that next working group session is on the 27th of January at 10:00 a.m., it's posted on Board Docs. So you're welcome to watch. You can also come to the Budget and Finance Committee meeting on February the 4th, where there'll be a more detailed update and presentation. There'll also be a more detailed update and presentation at the next workshop meeting that will be conducted here for the Governing Board. That's the intention, assuming that the working group has enough to present, they'd like to give an update, or they intend to give an update here for us so we get a deeper dive on what's under consideration. Just an update on those two things. The other comment is, to paraphrase something that was said at our workshop or previous meeting of the Governing Board pertaining to PORA, we're fiduciary, we have fiduciary responsibility to work in the best interests of our association, and sometimes that duty trumps empathy and trumps personal views. We have to look at what's in the best interests of the corporation. So as several of us have said, the vote today was, in my opinion, one that had to be made from what's in the best interests of our association. Thanks.
I'm actually gonna make a comment. I want to support what Director Novello said about the working group that is working on the reserve policy and those two policy, policies, FI4 and 12. The preview that the working group gave at the BNF Committee on Tuesday was one of the best presentations and cogent discussions of what we need to do with our budget and our, our investments, and with a long-term view. They've reached some very factual conclusions, you know, fact-supported conclusions, and I think there are ramifications for our strategy as we go forward. So I think it's important that everybody take a look at that video and see what it says, see what they have to say. The other comment I will make is, I agree that what happened here with PORA today is unfortunate, but this group of people up here has a fiduciary responsibility to look out for the association, and unfortunately, that's what we had to do. So as much as value as, as PORA has provided to us, you know, we have to, they have to move to their next stage in life. Director Chatten, any comments?
Oh, just a couple. Meeting on the 28th is not an open meeting, it's a, it's a small group to be discussing expansion requests that have been made, and we have all the interested parties attending that. And I think PORA can count on the Governing Board to assist in any way that we can legally assist to make sure that all those areas that they have been responsible for don't die, that they keep going. So, that's it.
Director Pajaskowski?
I agree with John. I think the board can help, or whatever we have to do to, to get PORA going. You have a marketing problem, our residents don't know what you do. You've dropped the ball probably for the last five to seven years, and that ball needs to be picked up and ran with. But the other thing I want to just say is, I want to give a shout out to our rec center staff. I went to the newcomers last night, and I went in October, and I went yesterday, and it was great. We had a ton of residents come out that were new and old because they were still checking out clubs. Didn't see you there, Carl, but that's okay. Saw you in October. And so you guys did a great job. I'm really excited that this is back for October. I hope next year we still have it in October and January again, because I think it's, it really helps the residents, even with the snowbirds coming back and they just get a refresh. So, thank you, staff.
Thank you. Director Williams?
No further comments? I think they've said it all.
Director Rhodes?
I don't want to be known as one of the people that, that turned our, turned our back on PORA, because that is not what this is about. And I want to echo what others have said, with a straight face, I think we can, if you reach out to us and we'll do whatever the Governing Board feels is appropriate to do. So I, I, I think this is a sad day for, for the Governing Board. I know it's a sad day for PORA, but you've probably been living those for a long time right now. So this is another one. So, but anyway, on top of that, I want, if you would all take a look at the capital investment that's gonna go into the bowling alley, there's a very, very large chunk of the money of the new capital that's gonna go in. We've got some major changes in there, and we want to be very transparent about that. There's probably in the neighborhood of a million two that we've got earmarked for different types of equipment, and these are all big, high-dollar machines that we're, we're looking at for the bowling alley. So I want you all to take a look at that if you would, please, because that will be coming up, and it's a very large component of our, of our, of our new equipment. So at that, thank you.
Thank you. Director Hurley?
Just one comment, thanks for not using black backgrounds on the slides.
You asked for it, Tim, we provide it. Okay, with that, that's board comments. I'll open the floor to audience comments, guest comments. Give us your name and your rec card number as you approach the lecturn. Thank you.
Preemptive comment, I already have my raffle ticket, by the way. Some of you recognized what I was holding in my hand, and as, as said, some of you already have purchased the raffle tickets for the raffle that'll be at our car show on February 8th, just a few days from now. No rain, it's gonna be a beautiful sunny day. It might be cold in the morning, but we have a 19, I mean, a 2004 Thunderbird as our raffle car, or $10,000 cash, second place, $500, third place, $200. Tickets are $20 each, or six for 100, and I have tickets here in my hand, and I can be, these can be sold to you, and you could be the proud winner. Last year's car went to a employee of the rec center, so it's not out of line that you too could be driving this Thunderbird convertible around town, and we're looking forward to seeing you there. It'll be a major function, that's February Saturday, February 8th. And Sabrina, I believe you're gonna be the one that's gonna pick the trophy car for the rec center. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Good to see you back.
I just wanted to conclude by saying that I appreciate each of you and the consideration you've given to PORA. It was a difficult task for all concerned. I, I have to tell you this, we got excited, and it's always good to learn something from Robert's Rules of Order, Mr. President. When I saw the agenda that says approval, I, I took a, a false signal out of that, but again, good to learn something from Robert's Rules of Order. But thank you again for your consideration. PORA will be working, so stay tuned.
Thank you. Any other audience comments? Mr. General Manager?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. So first, I just wanted to thank Sabrina for her hard work on the guest pass, that whole process was involved to figure out what that looked like and what that would look like operationally, so she did a great job with that. I also wanted to mention, I missed the first newcomers, or the first one for me, that would, would have happened, due to a conflict, I was there last night. What a great event, really enjoyed that, really nice turnout, so it was fun to kind of go around and talk to some folks and get to know them as well. And then I also just wanted to say thank you to the team for the mid-year update, they did a phenomenal job presenting that, had a lot of good, positive comments from that. So thank you again for all of their support and all of your support as board members. So thanks.
Okay, thank you. Last call. Okay, there's nothing else, I will adjourn this, oh, before I do that, I have to say when the next meeting is. Our next meeting is the Governing Board Workshop on February 14th, 9:00 a.m. in the lecture hall, and the next Governing Board Regular Meeting is February 20th, 9:00 a.m., also in the lecture hall. And with that, it is 10:22, I will adjourn the meeting.